I'm going to call the meeting of the Buchanan City Council order at 7 o'clock as we normally do. Normally, I would start us off with our normal tradition of introducing our Westland College students, but we have none with us tonight, so I don't know if they're on holiday or just didn't like the weather tonight. If you'll follow me in a moment of silent prayer or meditation, and then we'll go with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I have a special privilege or honor tonight to recognize special gifts with us tonight from Governor Tomlin's office, Mrs. Dot Underwood. She is going to be presenting the city with a very special grant from the Land and Water Conservation Grant. If Dot would join me, and if you'd like to, if you'd like to discuss or introduce what your program is.
Well, it is the season of good tidings, and I've heard them tonight. So, I have your application for your Land and Water Conservation Fund program, and your request has been approved from the National Park Service in the amount of $67,017. So, you guys, this is going to enable the city to construct some ADA improvements at the North Buchanan Park. So, this letter you'll keep for your records so that you have your contact information, and then this is your certificate for your official modification.
Before we do the picture, let me make it, let me say something first. Thank you for coming out in the weather to do this for us, and we are so happy to have been able to help all of our citizens of Buchanan in such a way, particularly our special needs, and of course, any of the citizens that are going to be able to utilize our park, and particularly what our program was, was being ADA compliant. So, it's really a fantastic thing that we have done. But I wish I could take the credit for it, but I can't. I have two gentlemen here that actually did all of the work for this program. One wrote the grant, and the other one helped facilitate the grant. So, as much as I'd love to take the picture with you, I'm going to ask them to come up and take the picture with you, because they did all of the work, and I can't take the credit for it. Mr. Jerry Arnold and Mr. Michael Doss.
Jay Holland.
Oh, sorry, Jay Holland. How long that?
It's for my cell and his papers.
It's great news. Happy holidays to us. Congratulations.
I'll go to the other side.
$67,000 is quite a Christmas present.
Small, Jerry.
I can't do it.
It's like on TV.
You do it rotary all the time.
Official.
Jerry, for your honor.
I'll smile.
You're welcome.
Do you work down at Charleston?
I actually work the Clarksburg area. Lynn Phillips is your rep from Alve Elkins, and he's off on knee surgery, so I'm pitch hitting.
Are you in any relationship to Cecil?
We are distant relatives.
Thank you so much, Dot. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank the Governor's Office. So, thank you very much, and I think everybody and all the citizens of Buchanan are much obliged to the Governor's Office. If you would, any of the citizens, please write, let the Governor know how much appreciation we are, not just for our healthy citizens, but all of the citizens of not only just Buchanan, but Upstate County who'll be able to utilize this special equipment. So, moving on, we're going to see our Department and Board reports, and we'll start off with Mr. Doss, our City Administrator.
Yes, you do have the financial report, again, unaudited for the month ending November 2014. Excuse me. So far, for the year-to-date, our revenues, we've collected $1,814,230.46. So far to date, with all of our departments and general fund, our expenditures are $1,474,882.90, which is actually a positive overall net revenue over expenditures year-to-date of $339,347.56. So, we continue to operate very well with our revenues over our expenditures. Again, I always give you a summation and report, and if you need any detailed reports, please, as always, see me after the council meeting, or give me a call, I'll be happy to provide a detailed list to you. The next two items are actually items that came out of our special session that we held on Monday. I was charged with a few items of returning and reporting back to council. One item is just a kind of a cleanup item, if you will. I did have the opportunity to run this by our city engineer, Jay Holland, and get Jay's input, but this is the establishment of a building and code enforcement officer. Keep in mind that the building part of this position is a new established position, so it'll be something unique and new to Buchanan, which we feel will benefit our citizens and our honest contractors out there. But this is basically the polished-up version, if you will, of establishing that building and code enforcement officer position. What I envision is coming back to council on the 18th and asking for final approval of the establishment of this position, which will then give us the opportunity to start running an ad, or ads in the papers, advertising through this position, and getting folks in here, so we can interview those folks, and get that person started, so he can work with Richard Clemens, our current code enforcement and zoning officer, to kind of learn the ropes, if you will, prior to Mr. Clemens' retirement. The next item is, again, another item coming out of our Monday meeting, and that is our advertisement and our, what we're calling, statement of qualifications for our next city attorney in Mr. McCauley's retirement. I wanted to get that in front of you and give you an opportunity to take a look at that. Also, we'll be coming back to council for final approval of that one on the 18th meeting as well, again, so we can get that position advertised, bring in the statements of qualifications, and start working so that the selected attorney can work with Mr. McCauley in his retirement, getting that individual up to speed. Again, that process will involve a statement of qualifications. Any attorneys interested would have to be licensed with the state of West Virginia, have a valid West Virginia Bar Association membership, amongst other things. Some of the stuff was taken from West Virginia Code, a lot of it was taken from our current city charter, but they would provide a statement of qualifications. The deadline for that right now is January 30th of 2015. This is just the process to refresh everyone's memory. Once those statements of qualifications are received, they'll be dispersed to council members to get feedback. A council will meet, select three attorneys to interview, and we'll grade those attorneys, and then we'll start negotiations with the first on their list. We'll get into more of the financial part of that as we go along, but that's the process at this point, so I ask council to take a look at that request and that establishment for the position of city attorney, and then if you have any questions or anything, give me a call, and we'll work our way through this, and hopefully, I'll put this back for final approval with you all at the next council meeting at the end of the month.
Any questions for Mr. Doss regarding his report? Thank you very much, Mr. Doss. I know we have Jerry Arnold next, but I had forgotten to add Mrs. Deborah Brockman for her report from Stocker Youth Center, and since she has to leave right after her report, I thought we'd go ahead and get hers out of the way before Jerry got yours. Sorry, Jerry. So, Deborah, if you'd like to give your report on Stocker Youth Center. Thank you.
Just want to give an update on what's been going on at the youth center with our programs. December is the start of our basketball program. We begin practices this month, and we'll be having games starting in January. This year, we have 30 teams so far, 350 players plus signing up, and we'll have games every Saturday at the high school starting in January. Also, as a part of our basketball program, we have cheerleaders, and they will be cheering on Saturdays during the games as well. And they have practice at the youth center at 4:30 on Tuesdays. Our after-school program is going very well. It runs Monday through Thursday until, after school until 6 o'clock. It's for children ages 5 to 12, participating daily. Currently have 85 children registered with 50 attending each day. We offer them a healthy snack as soon as they arrive, and then they split off into their clubs, and they have a choice of things that they can do each day, including the computer lab, the library, arts and crafts, open gym, game rooms, and homework help. Also, we have, our tutoring program is going well. The kids meet with their tutor for a minimum of two hours a day, a week. Some students require more time, and we accommodate that, or try to, depending on their tutor. Most of our tutors are Westland volunteers, but we also have several that are high school students, and the children relate very well to them as well. Right now, we have 15 students tutoring, and we do not have a waiting list. Our drill team has been very busy getting ready for the Christmas parades. They will be participating in two this weekend, the Buchanan and the Rock Hill Christmas parades. We currently have 55 members, and in January, we'll be having a new recruitment. Other things we have going on at the youth center is just not for kids. We have adult and teen fitness activity, program activities. Zumba is a favorite. It's Mondays and Wednesdays, 6 o'clock. We also have added another day, Fridays at 5:30. Yoga is Tuesdays and Thursdays at 5:30. We have three karate classes, Tuesday, Wednesday at 7, and Saturdays at 11. Kickboxing, Tuesdays and Thursdays at 5:30, and on Fridays, Friday mornings at 10. We also, our workout room is open daily, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., and it's open to anyone who wants to use it. There's a monthly fee. We also have guitar lessons on Tuesdays. We have individual lessons as well as group sessions. Also, we continue to be a popular spot for birthday parties for children. Every weekend is usually booked up a month or two in advance, but people are welcome to call and book their party. And last, this weekend, we are hosting the L B shoot, and that will begin at 1 o'clock.
Thank you, Deborah. Any questions for Deborah on the Stocker Youth Center? Deborah, I can tell you how refreshing it is. Go ahead, Rod.
Who teaches the guitar lessons?
Joe Pritchard.
Okay. When are those?
On Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
And he's there all day.
There's a lot going on at Stocker, and I've missed seeing Deborah's reports and having her report, so she came as a special request to me, and I can't wait to hear more reports from Stocker, because that facility is so refreshing, and I would encourage all of the citizens, if you haven't had the opportunity, kids or not, to come and see all of the opportunities that are available for adults, and for the youth, and for the children in our community. Basketball is now in full swing, but they do a lot of other things during the different seasons. So, Deborah, thank you for your report. I know you've got to head off to some of the basketball things, so thank you for coming in.
Can I ask one quick question?
Absolutely.
What, Deborah, what's in the workout room? What kind of facilities are they?
We have a couple treadmills. We have two bikes, and we have equipment that, if you remember the older, I mean, I think it's still out there, but it's not in, it's not in this area. That was the old Curves equipment, and we've had two separate donations of that equipment. Now, we don't do the circuit training that Curves has a copyright on. We just have the equipment there that they can use, and before you use it, we have a trainer, which she also works at the youth center. You have to go through the orientation before you can participate, and you also have to have a sign off from your doctor as well. But we do have that equipment.
What is your monthly fee for using the exercise room?
Actually, it's $20 a month. Very affordable, and in the, anybody who is a member of like Zumba, or yoga, karate, kickboxing, they get a discount as well.
Thank you, Deborah. We appreciate everything you do, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Arnold from Street Boys Department.
Good evening. Very brief report this evening. We haven't had a board meeting, a consolidated board meeting since Thanksgiving week. It's actually scheduled for next week, so just a brief department report. Guys have been, or we finished, actually finished up our paving that we had planned in November, Veterans Day, and finished up the section of Pocahontas Street, that the new sewer line had been laid on. Also, as you can tell, we still got the big hole out here for the light pole in front of City Hall. We have concrete scheduled for Monday to put the new light pole base in. We have, the old cast base was taken out to the waste garage and sandblasted, prepped, and it'll be reinstalled around the new pole. So, that's in the works for next week. We continue to work. We've got backfilling to do on the sidewalk. We're installing the light poles on these Main Street projects. Got a call today, and Jay is going to record a little more on this. The retros kits for Main Street will be delivered sometime next week, so look forward to getting to install some lights. We're also doing some, did some extensive drop, clean of our storm drops, sent some guys around with the, actually with the street sweeper, and cleaned everything from within the basins, and in doing so, we found a little bit of undermining problem up on Randolph Street towards Moore Avenue on that end, and so today, guys were digging that out and exploring what was going to take place there, and they made the fix, and we'll be pouring that back as well. So, we're still continuing to work, doing street work as well as working, doing some of our inside maintenance. That's all I have unless you all have questions for us.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold?
Please. Did you all put the lights up on Main Street, your department?
On Main Street, yes.
On Main Street, they're very nice. They look really nice.
Yeah.
The fencing and stuff with those lights.
No, the fencing, we can't take credit.
You can't?
No, sir, we can't take credit for that.
Who did that?
Mr. Buckett.
Oh.
He was, he was the one that contacted me and asked if it could be done, so, you know, we can't take credit for the fencing, but Reed's, yes, the guy who's done it.
It all looks very nice.
The lights really do. I've had a lot of people contact me and just come up and said they're really beautiful and enjoy them.
Any other questions for Mr. Arnold? Comments?
What time is that consolidated board meeting? You've asked me too quickly. It's 4 o'clock on the 9th. That's Tuesday. Yeah, we moved it to Tuesday, because we had another, we had another on Thursday. Tuesday at 4.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Holland, city engineer.
It's not how it's supposed to work. I'll be just as brief as Jerry, I believe. Update on the hazard mitigation grants for the booster pumps. Have a call into the project manager. I was, he said we should hear something by late December, but since we're not going to meet again until the beginning of the new year, I was hoping to report something to you today, but don't have anything on that. Chapman Technical Group continues their work on the water, the water treatment plant, structural repairs. The project is about 75% complete, and they, about 65% complete on the final design drawings and specifications. They're going to work through the winter and have that project wrapped up, and hopefully, ready for submittal to the Bureau for Public Health and the PSC for approval, and then once the funding comes through, we'll begin to work on that project, hopefully, late 2015 or early 16. Senate Bill 373, all that stuff, I'm going to give you an update on that. As I reported earlier, all the above-ground storage tanks have been submitted. The seven spill prevention response plans, I submitted them to the DEP on November 17th, and they're currently being reviewed, and I'm about 95% complete on the certifications, inspections, and they would need to be submitted for January 1st, 2015, but we'll be discussing those a little bit further at the Water Board meeting next Thursday. Hopefully, get all those little wrinkles ironed out and submit them before the Christmas holidays. I do have an update on the McDonald Route 20 lane winding project. The DOH engineering departments, you know, incorporating Sam and I's comments regarding their latest thoughts on the plans. We had some concerns where there were conflicts with the new storms in our sewer and water, so we're going to have an additional site meeting next Tuesday at 11 o'clock to discuss our concerns. And project dates have been shuffled around a little bit. Spoke with the project manager Monday, and the start of construction will now be March instead of January. I mean, for advertising and bidding. Construction will begin in April, not February, a little more weather-friendly, which we all knew would probably happen anyway, and then they, they expect completion of the project by October 2015, so only a month or two into the school year. Gateway East, Jerry reported to you that they're putting up the light poles. I received a call from the Main Street Light Suppliers today, and they're going to ship out tomorrow. We should see those LED light fixtures coming in either late next week or early the following week, whether Jerry or not can put those up, because it won't take a lot of time, probably about a week, but it just depends on the weather and what his schedule is. The bad part about that is, the other half of it is, the 43 East Main Street lights are not expected in until January 26th. Tried calling the supplier on that to get a reason why it's taking so long, but I was unsuccessful, but we're looking at a January 26th in that area for delivery of the East Main Street lights. Gateway West, not east, but west. We have to file our intent to apply with the DOH no later than December 16th. I have that application finished. It's just, all I had to do was update our original 2013 grant application with new numbers. Didn't change any of the quantities or anything like that, but updated the numbers due to cost of material increases. I do want to give you, the new board members, just a brief update of what that entails. Phase one of the project is installing new concrete sidewalks and period street lighting, just like we did on Gateway East, on the northern side of the Old Weston Road, and it will go under the Quarter H Overpass and stop there at the Liggett addition. Approximately 3,300 feet of sidewalk, 28 new streetlights, 10 drop inlets, because there are some low spots in the road, and we've got to get the water off the Old Weston Road and into the drainage structures down below. Contract one is just going to be the sidewalk portion of it, and it's approximately $232,000 in price. Contract two will be the street lighting, and it's $135,000, and that's what we're going to apply for, and hopefully, we'll get some good news on that in, within the next, you know, three to four months, and I can update you early next year. The Army Corps of Engineer Flood Protection Project, as you all have, I believe in your packet, a letter that was sent to the Army Corps of Engineer after some citizens and wildlife fishermen called in expressing their concerns about the project. I talked to the fishermen, because they were more concerned about the fishing, how it would be affected upstream of the water impalement or dam, and I informed them that the project has nothing to do with anything above the dam, it's all below, so that seemed to satisfy their concerns. But knowing that that was out there, I contacted the DNR, Mr. Jim Walker with them, and see if he had any concerns, or if he wanted to be brought up to speed with the project. So, I took him on a brief site tour early in November, explained the project to him. He wrote a letter expressing his concerns, so I thought, well, maybe now's the time to get in contact with the Corps, because we have citizens' concerns, fishermen and wildlife, people that enjoy the outdoors' concerns, the DNR, and Mr. Ludlow had some concerns regarding downstream of the sewer treatment plant, so wrapped that up in a letter, just expressing our deterrence, requesting a meeting, a get-together, a teleconference, if we could discuss the project in a little more detail. I was still hoping to hear from Mr. Hoyer with the Army National Guard in regards to September letter that I sent to them, seeing if they would participate if the project is still going to be required in some way. I have not heard back from, you know, Major General Hoyer. I'll attempt to get in touch with him before the holidays and update you all early next year. And finally, the source water protection plan. The reason I'm bringing this up, Tom Landis will report more to you all about it at the next city council meeting, but I've begun work on the source water protection plan, and that's required by the West Virginia DEP for all public water systems. In addition to Senate Bill 373, they keep throwing more logs on the fire. Plans due later than July 16th, but again, the reason I mention this is, we're having our first of three or four public meetings this upcoming Monday, the 8th, from 6 to 8 out at the Event Center at Brushy Fork. It's open to the public. If you all have any concerns or questions, or want to know more about what this source water protection plan is, and you'll start seeing in the papers, ZCCs, which are zones of critical concern, and PCSs, which PCSs, which are potential contaminant sources. All this will be explained and, you know, come to fruition next Monday, and I just wanted to get that out, because we won't meet again until after this meeting, and so if you haven't seen the ads in the paper about that meeting, here's your opportunity to do that. And there's no further questions.
Any questions, or from Mr. Holland?
This is the new Brushy Fork Center out there?
Yes, the, I forgot to mention, AKA, the new Army Guard National Complex.
What time, Monday?
6 to 8.
6 to 8?
P.M.
I have a question about the McDonald's traffic. Is that going to affect any of the Strawberry Festival parades?
They have, you know, we have expressed our concerns numerous times, and when it was to go this year, you know, they were going to set aside a timeframe for working around that. I'm hoping to talk to the project manager and the project engineer about that. I would not see why not, but now it's such a condensed schedule, I don't know what the plans are, but, you know, we are, we've expressed our concerns numerous times, you know, that's the big parade here, and that's a big activity here in May, and that's prime construction season, but how you're going to work around that, so.
Well, it is what it is.
Yeah, we've got alternate, you know, but.
Yeah, I think it's running, the other started. He's big.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Holland? Mr. Holland, we certainly, the city council and the citizens, appreciate all you do for our city. When you give your reports, I think a lot of times, a lot of it is widening, grants this, grants that, but this is a great example of some of the work that you do, and as far as the ADA compliance, that is a big deal for us, because we've been trying so hard, because it is such an expensive undertaking. All of the different grants that you apply for, and all of the other engineering work that you do is just a small part of the overall picture that you do for this city. So, I want to make sure that I express our appreciation and the citizens' appreciation for all you do, sir.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to be the first, before everybody in the city council gets up there, to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
We got one more meeting. Chief Chacey, Fire Department?
Good evening, just to have a few things. We've ordered some new equipment for our ladder truck. We've ordered some air packs that needed to be updated. The squad vehicle that we had that was involved in an accident, hopefully, in the next couple weeks. I told you, I think my last report, it had been delivered to the repair facility, and they're still working on it. We're getting updated reports that have the body on it, they're ready to let her. Hopefully, my guesstimate is about the next two weeks, we should have it back. We are in a process, and we'll have, by no later than next Wednesday, we'll have submitted a grant to the Assistance to Firefighters Grant for a new ladder truck. Cost of a new ladder truck is a million dollars. Actually, they just, they knock, it's one of those $99.99, they knock a few dollars off of them, so it sounds better, but it's a million color piece of equipment, so we're applying for a new ladder truck. We'll have that grant submitted by next Wednesday. And last but not least, our Christmas parade starts tomorrow evening at 6:30. Lineup is Spring and Madison Street around the Wendy's area, and it follows Strawberry Lane and ends at Stocker Youth Center. And Santa Claus will be at the fire station immediately following parade to have a visit with the kids.
What's the weather forecast?
I hope Sandy's got a rain suit. Hope Santa's gonna rate suit. Had to meet with Mrs. Claus today, and we're checking Santa's schedule, and we're gonna have a Plan B by sometime tomorrow, so if the weather is inclement, we hope to make an announcement, we had to do the same thing last year. If the weather's bad, in all seriousness, we hope to make that determination by noon, so we can get it on the noon news and get it out.
I've heard there's some other cities or towns that have rescheduled it.
Yeah, we had to do that last year, so now we're kinda getting it Mr. Claus's mercy with the scheduling. You know, a lot of other things going on, so that's what we're doing. Along with the Christmas parade, I just wanna, I received a letter, and there's been a lot of chatter, and I think, somewhat it's good chatter, about things that should be occurring in Buchanan for Christmas. You know, everybody wants, you know, we've, the Fire Department, you know, wants to do more, to do more, more. The guys took on a Christmas parade years ago, because there were a couple organizations that had given up on a Christmas parade. The Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department, for many years, assisted these organizations just by lining up the parade and helping out going around the community, and it got to the point that one year said, well, we're not going to Christmas parade this year. So if you know the farmer very well, some of us are kinda stubborn, and we said, yeah, we'll go on Christmas parade. So at that point in time, the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department picked up the Christmas parade, and we've been doing that ever since. That's our contribution to the community and to the kids. And I received a letter, and I know it came to the city, and I appreciate everyone's input, and Fire Department's doing what we can to make this a nice Christmas parade. Our number one goal is to have a viable Christmas parade for the children. We want the children to come and see Santa Claus. Some of these children, it's only a chance they get to visit Santa Claus. It's, you know, they get to be in a controlled environment. There's a lot of talk, a lot of ideas about what should be done for the Christmas parade, and I got a logary list of things and suggestions that can be done for the Christmas parade. And I really, really appreciate everyone's input to that, but, exactly.
Do something.
Do something, exactly. We are the Buchanan Fire Department, and we do a lot for the community, and as we've talked about our vampire situation. But, you know, there's a lot of that in the community. I think this should be done, I think that should be done. Well, if you think it should be done, it's not crowded on the sidewalk to commence to do something. So I'm not being critical of anyone, I just wanna say, there are a ton of good ideas. I've talked to Matt, I think he has some plans. A little late this year for Christmas, but all the, all the plans and all the ideas everybody has, Christmas will be the same time next year, so you've got all your now. Until you stole my thunder, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
I appreciate that. Any other questions? Mr. McCauley, City Attorney?
Thank you. You have in your packet tonight a notice, and I wanna explain, I explained it last time, as to the reason of the chronology of this notice. It's already appeared in the paper once, and the reason being is, under this comprehensive plan statutory stuff, it's set forth in Chapter 8A of the Code. It specifically provides that when the city government, that is the council, goes to consider formal adoption of the comprehensive plan, which is before you tonight on just a first reading, that fifteen days before the meeting at which the ordinance is proposed for adoption, which is the next meeting, December 18th. So even though you haven't approved anything even on first reading, we had to have the notice in the paper yesterday to satisfy that fifteen-day notice. So if you read that, and it's like, well, gee, why are we doing a notice when we haven't even had a first reading, it's because of that fifteen-day requirement. So you have the letter to the record though, as well as that public hearing notice in your package. It's our practice, it's not actually required by either our charter or state code, but for some time, we have been posting a copy of legal notices in the foyer at City Hall as well, and I think Mr. Clemmons typically puts those things on the city website. But the idea is to try to let everybody know, as much as humanly possible, covered on the TV tonight, the whole bit, that folks have the opportunity to appear and speak about the comprehensive plan. Now, as you consider here shortly, the other two ordinances that are zoning, planning related, those notices aren't in the paper yet. It doesn't have anything to do with Chapter 8A. It's covered under Chapter 8, and under Chapter 8 zoning-type things, you only have to give notice at least five days before the meeting at which the ordinance is going to be adopted. So that'll come somewhere between now and prior five days before December 18th. So we are, they're inconsistent, but that's because the statutory requirements are not the same. Okay, so there's that, and then you also have, that I gave you just late this evening, and this is only a draft, it does not require your action tonight, but I would like to review it with you just very quickly. If the numbers stay the same, and nothing else jumps ahead of this, this would be Resolution Number 2014-19 of the Council of the City of Buchanan, which would provide for a six-month extension to the current TV cable franchise agreement with Sequel III Communications Two LLC, a Delaware limited liability company. And in case you're wondering who those people are, they do business as Suddenlink Communications. But the formal name of Suddenlink is actually this titled Sequel III Communications Two LLC. And I'm not gonna read all the wheresses tonight, because we'll do that at the next meeting, but this just basically sets the stage for up to a six-month extension while we continue to work out some of the lingering details with the franchise agreement with Suddenlink. I would note that, as I mentioned to you last time, the last couple of franchise agreements, we merged what was a separate lease that I did for Cemetery Hill back in the 1980s with Triax Communications. Somewhere during one of those renewals in the 90s, we merged that in with the term of the franchise agreement. Because of some of the things that had happened with inadvertent trespasses and exceeding authority and the whole bit, there was discussion with Suddenlink, well, look, you've been using our hilltop up there, or at least a small portion of it, for free, for years and years and years. You guys treat the city as a business partner, we're gonna treat you as a business partner, and we've negotiated thus far a $500, starts out in year one, a $500 per month fee that they will pay to use that small part of Cemetery Hill for some of their equipment. Every year, there will be a 5% increase during the life of the franchise, and it's compounded, so whatever that plays out of being, but year two would be $505 a month, and continues to increase as we go on. So the other thing that I'm negotiating with Peter Brown is, there is roughly a thousand-foot, linear foot of line that will be running across a portion of what's really our cemetery operation, but most of this property is not suitable for graves. They also are gonna pay an annual fee, probably a dollar a foot, which is pretty customary in the industry for that. So what we haven't realized anything for will all of a sudden result in us, the City of Buchanan, seeing somewhere in the six, seven thousand dollar a year range, being paid by Suddenlink, and they're not paying now, so that's, that's a good thing. Just a couple of other real quick updates, because I don't have a whole lot to report about. I'm still waiting, unless AMBI has something to report about it. The final paperwork on the Angus suit, I've not seen anything about that yet. I don't think it's, I don't think there's a release and a formal settlement agreement, but we're still told that that's all wrapped up. Mutual aid agreements with the police agencies, I'm still working on those. A couple of real estate matters that I'll report at probably the next meeting involving Deer Creek, and that's about all I have this evening, until we get to the big action of the night, which is the reading of the ordinances, unless you all have some questions for me.
Any questions, sir?
Mr. McCauley, you stated in your comments that the lease was up to six months, and this says is an additional six months. Can it be shorter than that six months?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm hopeful that we'll have the franchise proposal done in the next month or two.
Okay.
Yeah, but the franchise isn't the problem. We haven't had a lease, because we merged it in as a provision in the franchise. I did spend some very careful time preparing a comprehensive lease that's gotta be more involved than what I did back in 1985. So that was the last, that was the last lease we had with the cable company. And I'd like to do it a one-two punch. Franchise agreement, lease agreement, do them both at the same time, that only makes sense.
Additional channel agreement?
Well, you know, it's, the whole channel thing is, be more peeped with the federal government than you can be with your cable provider. It's, we're at the mercy of Congress.
It's just that the citizens still don't believe what we say about the channels, they don't believe what Suddenlink says, and they don't believe the national news either, so what can you say?
Just since 1984, we've not had the opportunity to regulate rates, we've not had the opportunity to regulate programs. It's deregulation, that's, we've been in that mode for thirty years. In my opinion, more as a citizen as opposed to a lawyer, I think it's been a sad thirty-year period of time, but, you know, that's the way it goes. Call your congressman, Shelley Moore Capito will get it right.
Mr. McCauley, any other questions or comments for Mr. McCauley?
The only question I had, you said 5% for AMBI.
That's correct. There'll be a 5% increase built into the lease agreement. That will be referenced in the franchise.
Right, and that will be a six-year franchise?
Five years.
Five years?
Five years.
With an opportunity to renew.
As long as they meet the technical requirements, which they are very careful with the monitor, month to month, they do their testing, they certify their test results to the FCC, we really don't have the ability to not renew the franchise.
I thought, I thought you said 505, and earlier you said 5%.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Five hundred and five, or, actually, it'd be $500 and $25 in year two, and then go up from there. Mr. Thomas, with his excellent mathematical skills, catches me yet again, so that's, that's very good.
I never go there.
It would be 525 in year two, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Any other questions for Mr. McCauley, comments?
I have a comment, Dave. As we sat down to try to write what your job description is, is with Richard, is, it becomes even more aware to me of the critical scope that you provide ahead of the city as the city attorney and all of the other things in our community. I just wanna make sure we get that out there, because I am very grateful, and as, you know, I get to hear it in your reports, and I've heard it when I sat over there behind the TV camera, but when we sit down to try to write what these requirements are and stuff, it comes full clear, all of the services that you provide and what you have done for over the years, so I just wanna make that clear, and on behalf of the citizens, I thank you for all the work you've done. Moving on along, we go to Dean, we have correspondence. It's the city council vacancy, various letters of interest, we received four. We will be taking those under consideration, but we have to put them as a part of the record. We will take that into consideration under the executive session at the end of our meeting, and I would advise the press that they may wanna stick around for that, because we do believe that there will be some decision coming out of that. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of the November 20th, 2014 meeting, approval of the building and wiring permits, and approval of the payment of the bills. Any questions on that, or corrections that you can tell? Then I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, you can't do it at the same time, so.
Slow down.
Yeah. I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move you accept the consent agenda.
Moved by Mr. Pugh, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Alba. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion. All opposed? Same sign. Approved unanimously. I did that when we were on. Items removed from the consent agenda, of course, we don't have any in this case. Strategic issues for discussion and vote. We have the notice of the public carrying and first reading of ordinance 385, which is in your pack, and that pertains to our comprehensive plan. Mr. McCauley, please.
I'm going to read this by caption, I'll quickly go through the wheresses, just observe what are in the various articles, to conform with our charter and state statutory requirements. This is ordinance number 385 of the City of Buchanan, an ordinance adopting the city's comprehensive plan pursuant to Chapter 8A, Article 3, Section 1 et cetera of the West Virginia Code as amended. Whereas the statutory provisions of Chapter 8A, Article 3, Sections 1 through 14 of the West Virginia Code describe the purpose and goals of a municipal comprehensive plan, and further set forth the necessary steps and procedures that must be followed in order for the governing body of a municipality to properly adopt its comprehensive plan. And, whereas the immediately aforesaid statutory provisions specifically first require the municipality's planning commission to make comprehensive surveys and studies of the existing conditions and services, and probable future changes of such conditions and services within the territory under its jurisdiction, that is, the corporate limits of the City of Buchanan. And whereas the statutory provisions of Chapter 8A, Article 3, Section 3 of the West Virginia Code specifically provide that the City of Buchanan's planning commission shall prepare a comprehensive plan for the development of land within its jurisdiction, and then shall recommend the comprehensive plan to the city council for consideration and possible adoption. And, whereas following years of formulation of the comprehensive plan that included the conducting of extensive public surveys, gathering data, receiving citizen input, and holding numerous public hearings, the members of the City of Buchanan's planning commission agreed during a public hearing conducted on October 28, 2014, to formally recommend to the Buchanan City Council that the Buchanan Comprehensive Plan 2020 be adopted as the comprehensive plan for the City of Buchanan. And, whereas the planning commission's recommendation was specifically set forth and embodied in the report dated November 6, 2014, filed together with the actual and recommended comprehensive plan, both of which were duly submitted for the city council's consideration during and made a part of the record of the city council's regularly convened meeting of November 6, 2014. And, whereas the comprehensive plan further was presented on behalf of the planning commission to the city council during the November 20, 2014 city council meeting. And whereas the city council, following the presentation of the comprehensive plan on November 20, 2014, then directed the conducting of a public hearing before the city council at least fifteen days prior to the meeting during which the comprehensive plan was scheduled for adoption, in conformity with the statutory provisions of Chapter 8A, Article 3, Section 7 of the West Virginia Code as amended. And finally, whereas, the council of the City of Buchanan now deems it to be reasonable and appropriate to adopt the foregoing recommendation of the planning commission, as is set forth within the planning commission's report dated November 6, 2014, emanating from the planning commission's October 28, 2014 meeting, and hence to adopt the recommended comprehensive plan, that is, Buchanan's Comprehensive Plan 2020, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Buchanan as follows. Article 1, very quickly, is just the findings of the council that reiterates primarily the wheress paragraphs that I just read. Article 2, miscellaneous provision paragraph that is standard in these ordinances. Article 3 is the standard severability article, and Article 4 is simply the effective date. This would be effective upon, well, thirty days following the second reading, which would make this ordinance, the comprehensive plan, effective on January 18, 2015. In order for us to continue as a city, to be able to do zoning and planning and those things, this ordinance had to have been adopted before December 31, 2014. You're adopting it on December 18, 2014, even though the provisions of the ordinance won't be effective until thirty days thereafter pursuant to our charter and state code. It is mature for you this evening to consider this on first reading. It's my recommendation to the council that you do approve this on first reading this evening, and that you establish on your agenda at the outset of the next council meeting on December 18th, a public hearing in conformity with Chapter 8A of the Code.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley.
I would entertain a motion to accept, well, I would entertain a motion to accept the first reading and to have a notice, a public hearing for ordinance 385 concerning the comprehensive plan. I would entertain a motion. Motion made by Mrs. Kapari, second?
Second.
Mrs. Alba, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. McCauley, first reading of ordinance number 386, the zoning of the ABS property.
Yes. You'll recall that back in... You'll recall that back in the summer, upon the application of ADS, which is owned by IAA Insurance Auto Auctions out of Chicago, Illinois, they asked to bring in some property that they were have a lease purchase on with Delta West. And there were also a couple of separate smaller tracts owned by Delta West that are not being leased that they've asked to be brought into the city limits as well. These three parcels total 5.4 acres of land. They were annexed back in the summer. The property, as you will recall, as it comes into the city limits, it comes in in the most restrictive way pursuant to our ordinance 244, which follows state statute. So anytime a municipality annexes property, it comes in most restrictively. Our most restrictive zone is residential 1, the most, R1. So this is going to make the rest of this new property compatible with the other 13 acres that they've been using for their operations out there. Ordinance number 386 of the city of Buchanan and ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 244 of the city of Buchanan are rezoning all of the real estate, that is 5.4 acres, annexed into the corporate limits of Buchanan in July of 2014, from R1, single-family residential district to industrial district. Whereas pursuant to section 615 of ordinance 244 of the city of Buchanan, real estate annexed into the city is classified as R1, single-family residence district until such annexed areas may be otherwise zoned. And whereas pursuant to ordinance number 382, adopted on July 17, 2014, and effected on August 17, 2014, the city council approved the annexation into the city's corporate limits, three tracts of land aggregating 5.4 acres situated along or near the eastern side of the Brushy Fork Road, being Upsher County Route Number 7, all in Buchanan District, Upsher County, West Virginia, all of which real estate was thus zoned R1, single-family residence district. And whereas pursuant to a properly published legal notice, a public meeting of the planning commission of the city of Buchanan was held on October 28, 2014, to specifically consider the possible amendment to ordinance number 244 insofar as rezoning of the aforesaid 5.4 acres of land from R1, that is, single-family residence district to industrial district. And whereas as a result of the aforesaid public meeting, said planning commission voted to specifically recommend that the city council amend ordinance number 244 by rezoning the subject 5.4 acres of land from R1, that is, single-family residence district to industrial district. Said recommendation being set forth in that certain report dated November 6, 2014, which was previously filed with the city council. And finally, whereas the council of the city of Buchanan now deems it to be reasonable and appropriate to adopt the foregoing recommendation of the planning commission as is set forth within the commission's November 6, 2014 report, emanating from the October 28, 2014 meeting and further in the manner as is depicted and set forth upon the attached map. What then follows, again, article 1, findings of council, article 2, general description of the real estate, article 3, our standard miscellaneous provision article, article 4, severability, article 5, effective date. This would be a two-reading ordinance and it would become effective again 30 days after a second reading passage and adoption on December 18. It's my recommendation to the council that you approve this on the first two readings this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. I would entertain a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance 386, the zoning of the ADS property from R1 to the commercial district. Is that what it is? Yeah. I would entertain a motion.
Yes.
Mary Alba, motions, second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Kapari, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. McCauley?
They're getting short each time. This is ordinance 387 of the city of Buchanan and ordinance amending zoning ordinances number 244 and 383 of the city of Buchanan by repealing the college district. Whereas the council of the city of Buchanan established the college district pursuant to ordinance number 383, adopted on August 21, 2014, and effectuated on September 21, 2014. And whereas subsequent to the adoption and effectuation of ordinance number 383, the city council requested the city's planning commission to reconsider the college district. And whereas the planning commission of the city of Buchanan convened on October 28, 2014, and specifically recommended to the city council that the college zoning district be repealed, that recommendation having been set forth in the report of the planning commission dated November 6, 2014, and received by the city council during its regularly convened meeting of November 6, 2014. And whereas the council of the city of Buchanan now deems it to be reasonable and appropriate to adopt the foregoing recommendation of the planning commission as is set forth within the commission's report, emanating from the October 28, 2014 meeting, and to repeal the college district, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Buchanan as follows. The findings provision in paragraph 1, under article 1, incorporates the above wherethes. However, I think number 2 is an important thing for council to be cognizant of, that all land that had been rezoned into the college district pursuant to ordinance number 383 now shall be rezoned to its previous designation of R2, that is residential district B. As a result of the adoption of this ordinance, it's as though the college zone, at least come January 18, never existed and it would go back to what was in the 1988 ordinance 244, the college property would all be zoned R2 as of January 18 of 2015. It's my recommendation, this matter is mature for you this evening, and it's my recommendation that you consider it on a first of two readings.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. I would accept a motion, or entertain a motion for to accept the first reading of ordinance 387, the college zone repeal. So move. Moved by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Pugh. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. McCauley?
The last of the four for tonight, there's new wave coming in January, I should be ready. You think that we're done with ordinance changes? We always are working on ordinances. This is ordinance number 388 of the city of Buchanan and ordinance authorizing the payment of longevity pay for full-time municipal employees of the city, including the employees of all four of the city's utility boards. Short wherethes. Whereas chapter 8, article 5, section 12 of the West Virginia code entitled Compensation of Officers and Employees specifically provides that, quote, "The governing body of every municipality shall have plenary power and authority to provide by ordinance for the allowance of time off of officers and employees with pay for vacations and onus and for personnel, management incentives, all as additional consideration for their service and employment." And whereas the city council previously adopted and approved an employee handbook, the provisions of which apply to all city employees. And whereas the city's employee handbook specifically provides under the caption, quote-unquote, "longevity," that, quote, "The city recognizes the value of employee service and long-term commitment and dedication to the city of Buchanan. For that reason, the city may choose to implement longevity pay as a monetary benefit for employees. Longevity pay will only be approved annually, and if the financial stability and conditions of the city's budget allow for implementation, longevity compensation will be treated and paid as separate compensation from regular wages. An employee's year of service commences on the anniversary date of their hire, and employees do not get credit for any years of service until the accrual of one complete year from their hiring date anniversary." And whereas the city council now desires to specifically implement and authorize longevity pay for all full-time city employees and including full-time employees of the city's four utility boards, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Buchanan as follows. Article 1 contains the findings largely set forth in the whereas paragraphs. Article 2 provides, makes provisions for calculating employee longevity pay. I think we went over those at the last meeting. Nothing has changed relative to that. Article 3 is the adoption of reasonable and appropriate administrative rules and regulations by the city administrator. This allows Mr. Doss not to change the ordinance, but if things happen on a day-to-day, year-to-year cycle as this ordinance is administered, he can come up with ideas for that implementation of things that he would then file and make a part of the record with city council and you get the idea with that. And then finally, article 4 is simply the effective date. Again, this is a two-reading ordinance, first reading tonight, second reading, if you pass it tonight, would be on December 18, and it would go into effect and be the law of the city as of January 18, 2015. It's my recommendation that you consider this and take it up on first reading tonight. Unlike the other three ordinances that we just went over, this ordinance will not require a legal ad or a public hearing, so it simply have to be on your agenda for you to act on it on second reading at the December 18 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. I would entertain a motion to accept, to accept the first reading of the ordinance 388, employee longevity.
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Kapari makes the motion, a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Alba, seconds. Discussion?
Yes.
Sir?
Excuse me.
I see nothing in here that tells when the payments shall be made to the employees.
Okay.
What month, what. As you know, I was not in favor of it being paid in December or January because I thought, and I still think had it been done like that, that this would be construed as some way of getting around the Christmas bonus, which has been determined to be illegal by the tax department. I still feel that way. I discussed with you that I thought that a very fair way of implementing a longevity pay would be to pay the employee on the date of their, the anniversary of their employment. It seems to me that that would be a fair way to the employee because they don't have to wait six months or so, or sometimes in fact maybe a year, to get their longevity pay when they're entitled to it. Other companies that I have seen, including one I used to work for, did it, and they did it on the anniversary date of the employee's employment. I would prefer that we do it that way. And I'm open to discussions about other ways that it could be done, but I'm definitely not in favor of paying it in December or January where it still can be construed as a Christmas bonus.
If I might, that was a very, very great discussion we had, and we took that into consideration and advisement. I have spoken to Mr. Doss and he has, within this ordinance, the ability to provide the date. And according to your wishes, we would not be looking at actually doing the longevity payout, now you've got to keep in mind the payroll and all. We tried thinking about your idea per hire, but that adds some really interesting accounting quirks and auditing quirks that make it really difficult for Mr. Doss and for our assistant assistant city treasurer. So we are, if you're still interested, we would still be able to do it in March or April to affect that pay. And Mr. Doss does have, according to this ordinance, the ability to set that date. Keeping in mind now that this is unique in the situation that, and this is for all council and for the citizens, that because we're initiating it the second half of this year, 2015, which affects 2014, 2015, we will not revisit this until the budget talks in March. That's when we would determine whether or not we actually have the availability of funds and where the physical, where we are physically within the city. That's when the city council would actually determine whether or not this is actually feasible according, and Mr. Doss, of course, has a lot of say in whether or not we feel that this would be possible for that coming year's budget. Now, having said that, we would discuss whether that's the case. Now, you have a June revision to the budget. Am I right, June, the first revision? It's July, first revision, because the end of the year is June 30. That we can actually still, if we didn't feel that it was appropriate, not allow the longevity. So having said that, does that answer your concerns?
It doesn't completely alleviate my concerns, no, sir.
Okay.
I see it's item B of article 1, is that where you're talking about this, Mayor?
Actually, no, I was looking at article 3, administrative rules and regulations by Which actually kind of refers back to that. He has the ultimate take, date, because of the fact that it's a bookkeeping payroll issue.
And he recommends to the council.
He recommends to the council. I, I would be very open to having this paid like the month right before the fiscal year end. I still think March, April's a bit early. If it were paid in June.
Only thing with June and July is it's end of fiscal year beginning, so at the end of June, we're trying to get all of those expenses wrapped up in July.
It seems like then you're four months out of the year then that we don't want to do any work to implement that. How much work is involved in doing it on the employee's anniversary date?
Well, the thing is, I mean, you want to, you want to keep that separate from the entire payroll process, so you would run it a week in between the bi-weekly process. And to be honest with you, a lot, number one, there's a lot of folks that actually their anniversary date is in January, between January 1st and January 15th, there's actually several. The other thing is, I mean, conceivably you could be running a payroll process in between your actual bi-weekly payroll processes. I mean, so you'd be constantly, and you may do it for one individual, you know, so it would, it would be kind of an arduous process. We would be paying and, you know, conceivably printing out checks every week.
Is there a chance that any employee may, if they were terminated for any reason, ever be owed a longevity fee because they hadn't been paid within the time that they lived there?
If you, if you set it up on their anniversary dates, you could run into that problem. I mean, honestly, the best thing to do, and again, it's the wishes of council and it can be changed, you know, because we're in between first reading and second reading, whatever you want to set up. Preferably, it would be good to just set a date, if it's March 1st, April 1st, the 30th, or whatever those months. It's just the ones that don't work out the well for us is closing out our books and then opening up our books, and that, of course, is June and July. But I mean, from our standpoint, anything else is open the other, the other 12 months.
Can I say something about this?
Mr. McCauley?
The state legislature is very, very antsy, very careful about compensation to governmental employees. So there's state law that speaks to this. And if you create a compensation mechanism, such as this one, which is beyond the regular pay, it has to be done, that opportunity to do that has to be established by ordinance. This ordinance will not pay one penny to anyone. It simply creates an opportunity for this council if, whether it's March, April, Halloween, whenever, whenever you guys would decide, if you decide, that there are revenues sufficient, that your bank account's good enough, that you want to do the longevity pay for the full-time employees, you have that opportunity. Without this ordinance, you don't have that opportunity. You couldn't consider it under any circumstances. So this is just a year-to-year cut. It allows you on an annual basis, not more than once a year, to consider it, but you don't have to do it. This ordinance could sit there for 50 years, be effective, and you never pay a penny out to anybody. On an annual basis, the governing body would determine that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We'll come back.
I have, I have some comments.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
This ordinance triggers a couple of things that we really didn't think about, or I didn't think about in our workshop Monday or the previous council meeting. You know, David, there's a, when we have the full-time employees, there may be situations where a member at the college, we had seasonal and part-time employees, and some of those were, especially in the part-time category, may have been there 10 or 20 years in a certain position, but they weren't defined as full-time. And I think we ought to think about that. I don't know how many individuals are like that in the city that would be considered long-term part-time employees, but I think they ought to be considered also. And I, sorry, I didn't think about that before, but I think, I mean, I don't know we have people like that that have been five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years as simply part-time. That's something we might want to consider. And then this ordinance triggers with me that I think at some point in time, we need a comprehensive review. a comprehensive review of our compensation packages for employees. You know, I don't know what our life insurance is for our individual employees, that, you know, term life, group life is very, very inexpensive, and it's something that we ought to take a look at, as long, along with all the other kind of benefits that we provide our employees. So I think we have to take this in context, that this is simply one element, one component, but it may be time for us to take a look at what are we providing our individual employees. And I think the council, last workshop, and council being part of that, we used the term underpaid incentive, and I think we have to be careful how we, you know, do we underpay? Do we overpay? Do we pay appropriately? And I think all of us on the council need to have a more in-depth review of what our compensation packages are for our employees. I'm conceptionally, philosophically, I'm supportive of this, and I think you've written a, you and Michael have written the ordinance in such a way it gives us maximum flexibility.
Remember also that the term full-time employment has been previously defined in other employee ordinances, which are not being, you're not abolishing those.
Right.
And full-time versus people that work 40 hours a week as a seasonal player, those are distinguished in the employee handbook that you approved two or three years ago. So I was trying to create with Michael's, Michael was the architect, I was the bricklayer, trying to, to not have an ordinance that became 10 pages long, that referenced a whole bunch of other unnecessary things that we didn't really need to reference.
And maybe my observation about, you know, long and part-time is not pertinent, but I, I think that's something I just wanted to throw in.
Well, Mr. Thomas, in order to address your concerns, it's something Michael Dawson and I already talked about, we're looking at scheduling a workshop, council, to do, address just the issues you're concerned with. We're looking at saying, okay, we might as well take a look at the compensation, what are the benefit packages and exactly what it is defined that an employee gets for the city. Your calls have been heard and they will be answered, sir. Thank you. Anybody else? Any? I have a call for the motion. So I have, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor say, uh, we already discussed it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see here, comments and announcements. We'll start with Mrs. Alba.
I just wanted to say that the first working meeting that we had of council, that Mr. Doss conducted, was one of the most productive things that, that I've experienced, and I'm glad to hear that we're going to have more of those. And also wanted to let you know that at last night's planning commission meeting, Mr. Clemmons was elected as the president of the planning commission until his retirement in 30 June, or sooner as he says, and Mrs. Ann Livisay was elected as the vice president for the planning commission for the next year. And, and that was the only thing we conducted last night, other than, or we had no business because we have no taskings from the city as of yet, but, because we finished the 2020 plan, and, but we did vote that Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month is the most important, or most best day for everyone concerned to have our meetings if necessary. So, and that was all.
Thank you, Mary. Mrs. Kavari?
I thought the meeting we had was very productive also, and I thought that was a very good thing for us to start doing. Other than that, I just wanted to say, I just want to put a little shout out for, does everybody know who Phyllis Costin is from the college? Okay. She's the one who started the Learning Center. Well, if you get the Oprah magazine, her daughter, Suzie, is featured in there as one of the makeovers this, this month. She is, she is an animal shelter person, and she travels from New York to California, and she actually, I used to do her hair, and she's 50 years old now, but they did, they did a makeover over, and one of five people that Oprah Winfrey chose, and she's in her December magazine.
She lives in Upstate New York.
And she lives in New York, and I just thought the community might want to know that. That's all.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. Pugh?
Yes, sir. First of all, I too would like to express my appreciation to the governor's office for the 88 grant. Something that I've been very adamant about was getting something for the, the children that are special needs that can't use our park at, on Park Street. I'm so happy over this that I might even bring the leg saw and go over there and use it myself, one of these places. But the second thing I want to, want to speak of is that December 13th, 7 o'clock in the evening, Sutton Lake has most graciously sponsored a benefit concert for the parish house. The admission for the concert will be a can of food or maybe a toy for the Toys for Tots. There'll be a young marine there collecting toys, and if any of the ladies out there want to get their picture taken with this super dressed, nice young man, I'm sure that that can be arranged also. If you want to get your picture taken with me, that'll be a different subject. But the concert will be very professional, all the musicians are professional musicians, and have sang in Nashville and the White House and, and places like that, and there'll be three acts, they will, 7 o'clock, there'll be door prizes handed out throughout the period, and once again, please come out and support the parish house because, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say where it was, did I? I'm not going to tell you. It's at the Performing Arts Center in Weston College, and they have most graciously donated that, used that to us also. So, and the merchants downtown, the ones I've been able to see are giving graciously for door prizes and such, and I appreciate that so much and invite everybody out on that date. There's a lot of stuff going on. I know it's December 13th, 7 o'clock in the evening.
Who's going to be there, Bob?
Well, it'll be Ed Crawford, who sang 10 years with the Kingsman Gospel Quartet. He was a lead baritone with them. He's a Buchanan boy, if anybody knows, Rela and Bob Martin, that's his mom and dad. The, there'll be a, I can't remember what the name of the trio is, they're from Kentucky. Leah Michelle, a young lady, fabulous singer, is going to be the, the third one. And so, and there'll be Christmas Carol singing, and Santa Claus will be there also. I think that's about all I've got, except I want to say one thing about the planning commission meeting. I don't ever like to be detrimental or anything like that, but that was absolutely the worst held meeting as far as Robert's Rules of Orders and everything that I have ever been to in my life, and I'm ashamed to see that Rich Clemmons did not conduct that in a reasonable.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Mr. Thomas, you got any comments?
I have two comments.
Sir?
The, the work, the work session we had on Monday, this past Monday, was, I think, very good discussion, and I gave my phone number out, so I've had a number of calls, and I just wanted to indicate to the citizens and residents that there is nothing set in concrete. This is open for discussion as far as the fees, and I think that we, as council members, we really need to listen to individuals that have, you know, we, none of us have our own capital at risk most of the time, like the business people, and I think we need to be very cognate of their input. I think we ought to approach a chamber of commerce, and this is something that's going to take time, it's not going to be done in the next 30 or 60 days. We need to have an in-depth conversation with a lot of different people, and, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of financial issues that we're all facing in our society today. I suggested 30 years ago we consider metro government, and I almost got hung by suggesting that. But it's a work, it's a working process, and I hope everybody will provide input, we're going to have town hall meetings and so forth.
Yes, sir.
My second comment is, I want to think that people, I want to say this very carefully, this is a time of year where you're going to get a lot of phone calls from telemarketing operations to ask you for money. And oftentimes, I've, I've said up here numerous times the last number of years, that there are individuals that will call you and give the impression that they're ex-law enforcement, and they're asking for money so they can take a child for 250 bucks, or I don't know if the numbers change yet. But when you ask that individual, you know, how much is going to actually go if I give $500 or $200, how much is actually going to go for the benefit of the child, they usually will hang up on you. And I don't want to single any particular telemarketing outfit that does this, but it, it happens all the time. I got a call today, I have a, a phone that provides me the number of this calling and who's calling, and it said Dave Thomas calling. I'm going, geez, what the heck's going on? Well, it's a scam, you know? And just be very, very careful. I think the paper needs to talk about this. There's so many good things going on in our community. I've just found out that there were 330 angels adopted from the Salvation Army for Upsher County. That's probably an investment of $35,000 or $40,000 for our kids. The parish house does stuff like the concert going in and so forth. The Moose had a Christmas shop where you can go in and buy a toy for a dollar that would normally cost $15 or $20 at Walmart, and Walmart participates in that. So be careful what you're doing, give to organizations, whether it's a parish house or Salvation Army or local church, there's a lot of good organizations out there, but there's a lot of scam marks too. And I just wish you all a happy holiday, I'll do that again on the 18th, and have a nice safe evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I just have a few things. First of all, my comments are, I cannot tell you how fortunate I am in the position that I've been placed in to get to work with the folks that I work with in our city. And a great example, of course, is Jay Holland, Jerry, the teamwork with Mr. Doss as well for this one grant, but we get grants all the time. And as we walk down the street and as I got to watch them put up our Christmas lights and our declarations downtown, again, the hard work that they do. I took a tour out at the, again, at the sanitary plant because I love the scene called the pista grid, if anyone will look that up. I haven't thrown that word in there. You've got, you've got to be really impressed with the hard work that these folks give every day. Couple of announcements that I have, I would like to make sure that everybody's aware, on December 11th at 7 o'clock, we're going to have the Animal Care and Control Commission meeting, that's regarding ordinance 300, it regards all of our city pet, animal care, control within the city of Buchanan. I want to make, I want to thank Doss, Mr. Doss, for his leadership on that workshop, and I want to remind everyone that we will be setting up a town hall in January to discuss the things that we talked about in our special meeting. I am not going to forget that, that will not be put off to the side, we will be having it, it'll probably be right in the middle of January, so I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, it's always great to see the crew here, and of course, our press and correspondents for being here tonight. So having said that, I would accept a motion to go into executive session per what personnel, for personnel, per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4.
Mrs. Alba didn't give any comments, did she?
Yes, she started it.
Okay. Well, I'm losing my mind.
I'll make the motion go in executive session.
I'll second.
Motion second, all, all in favor say aye. Post same sign?
Thank you, Dave.
I'm going to re-convene the meeting of the city council after executive session and duly discussed. I would entertain a motion to appoint Robin Simons as the new city council member to replace Mr. O'Neil after his resignation.
I would make that motion, sir.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Pugh, a second by Mrs. Kupari. All, any discussion?
Third by me.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign? Congratulations. I do want to, for the record though, before we convene the meeting, Mrs. Jenkins is going to explain for the press the process by which the next election cycle will proceed, because we are in a unique situation with the amount of people that will be up for reelection and a unique position on the position that Mrs. Simons has. I will, for the record, state that Mrs. Simons only, is, is only elected to the next election cycle, which is 2016, which I will leave to Ambi to discuss or explain the rest of the cycle.
Okay, I'll try to explain it. In the 2016 election, the call for election will call for three council seats for four-year terms, and one council seat for a two-year term, and the mayor's position. So in other words, there's going to be five positions on council, but you have to make it clear the one position that Robin will be filling until the next regular election, according to city charter, is, will be for the two-year term, and one, you, when you come in to file, you would only file for either the, if you're filing for council, the four-year term or the two-year term.
Ambi, would that be designated on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes, it would be on the ballot, and it would be also on their call for candidacy.
So you'll have a separation of you're running for either two years?
It would be, yes, it would be for the three offices four-year term, and for the one office two-year term, and for the mayor's four-year term. I don't think we've ever had five, I don't.
No, I think that's.
It's a very unique situation that we, that we're placed in, but we're going to be able to handle it. In fact, we may be able to bring a unique story to an election seminar we have to go to in January or February, so it's a unique story. Having said that, is there any questions or comments from the audience?
Congratulations, council, you done good.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
I second that.
You can go home.